All right, and we please call this Pleasant Mission Meeting on Tuesday, August 27th. Uh, to order. Uh, please rise, please be, please in the prayer.
Please God, yes, dear Jesus, thank you for bringing us here together today, Lord. I pray that you will help us to, um, think responsibly, Father, and to, um, to help the Lord hear all sides and do you well. We love you and praise you, Jesus, amen.
Great, we will. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First motion, we have to approve the agenda. Do you want to hear a motion?
My motion.
So your second.
My second.
Agenda approved. Uh, second, work of business, we have to approve the minutes from last meeting. Do you everybody read over them?
Yes.
Do I hear any motion?
My motion.
My second.
All right, I just want to remind everybody that this commission, all we can do is recommend, we're a recommending body. Uh, later on, the city commission will actually do the approval of the files. So first order of business, item one. Uh, discussing request by applicant Nick Taylor on behalf of Blue Star Enterprises, the owner of approximately 4.05 acre zone C2 general commercial located at 294 East Church Street, parcel JA3095, for variance from the city of Jasper zoning ordinance, section 94 to 96, commercial standard C1, see to utilize metal accents exceeding the 10% maximum allowance for the building facade. Mary Elizabeth, can you tell us more about it?
I certainly can, thank you. Uh, so this, as you stated, this is a variance request. Um, it is to allow more than the 10% accent, uh, metal accent, uh, along commercial buildings. So, uh, as you can see, we are looking at tractor supply here. Um, located, uh, right off East Church Street, it is about four acre, it's over four acres. Uh, general commercial is the zoning, uh, it is on city water and sewer. Uh, it does have 275 feet of frontage and it is used as a retail location. So your surrounding uses, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with this. Across the street, we have Regions Bank. Um, next door to the west, we have CBS. Uh, to the east, uh, we have the funeral home and the south is vacant, a lot of those guys up there. So, uh, so the variance request, um, it is due to that area where as you see, uh, that, it's cantilevered over the sidewalk there, that area right there, they would like to replace that cedar shake with aluminum split seam, um, aluminum siding up there. They are citing for their variance request that they are having structural stability issues with the weight of the cedar shake and availability of cedar shake. So, uh, they did provide an engineering letter stating that due to the, uh, that area, being over 40 years old, um, it is in need of repair and that the lightweight metal roofing, uh, will be better than the cedar shake. And they did provide that from a structural engineering letter. Uh, you can put that in your packet. So staff analysis, as you guys remember, uh, we do have several criteria. You have to meet them all, uh, and not just one. So first is there any extraordinary or exceptional conditions pertaining to this particular piece of property, shape, size, or geography? Um, obviously this is built and it's already been able to sustain what it has on it, so there is nothing unusual about this property. Uh, and is this an unnecessary hardship? Um, we do not believe that this would be an unnecessary hardship. There are alternatives such as replacing the cantilevered structural area, um, if it is that dilapidated and cannot hold a cedar shake. Uh, and that this is more out of a preference and lack of trying to find alternative measures. Probably has a little something to do with financial as well as, as metal and, um...
It's gonna be on the line, I guess.
Uh, cedar shake being, um, a little bit heavier than the aluminum. So, um, is this peculiar to this property? No, uh, there's nothing peculiar about this property. Again, as I said, it is, uh, uh, it is already being used for this and already has maintained, uh, this building for four, over 40 years. Uh, is this an action of the property owner? Um, no, this is, uh, well, I guess it could be, whereas they don't want to rebuild the cantilever portion to be structurally stable to, um, add the cedar shake back on. And so, and again, um, would this cause substantial detriment to the public good or impaired purposes? Um, I mean, it would be precedent setting if we were to allow this much. Um, it is, 10% is the limit and this is more closer to a 30 to 40% if they were to do this on the facade. So where 10% is the allowable accent, um, this would go well in above and we would have more people seeking this alternative. So, uh, staff recommendation is denial as they have not met the criteria for, um, the variance.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience here who would like to speak on this matter?
Can I ask a question?
You can.
Um, is this not, because I know tractor supply doesn't own the building. Um, but other tractor supplies, that's the facade that they use and it's typically, you know, more of a metal roof style. So is that not something that they're just trying to go off of what they do with other buildings? I guess, I get, I understand what you're saying with our ordinances, but I just didn't know, to me, that would look a lot better than what it looks up right now.
So, I, it, it may be something that they, uh, use as whether they're trademarking or, or such. Um, they are not indicating that, uh, that this has anything to do with their branding. Um, the alternative is only to be used because, um, as the engineer had stated that it is not structurally stable enough to hold a cedar shake.
And how is it done?
Sir, please stand, state your name, if you will, please come up and say something.
Oh goodness. Uh, I don't have a dog on this side, my name's Jeff Hanky. Uh, but I can tell you, it, a couple of things. I think your definition of metal and aluminum is pretty narrow. I mean, modern buildings today with facing, don't use shaped shingles. Now, are they, are they required to do shaped shingles because that's what it already was?
No, they are required to, only be allowed to have 10% metal accent.
Okay, so, so that could be metal or it could be something else. It doesn't have to be shaped shingles, is that correct?
Correct. It just can only be 10% metal. And so where they want to do 30 to 40% metal.
Right. Well, a lot of the metals are now today have, uh, wood grain printed on them, they're shingles, I think it's a very, we're gonna have to look at, you know, what kind of thing that, that they might. But the only other thing that I was gonna mention is, you said rebuild the cantilever of the building, had to be really, really big, huge expense to a place like that and probably, I, I, I don't know, you know, if they would stay there or not. But the nature of a cantilever is that the portion in the front is hooked to something, cantilevering from the back. So that means it should be a little limited as what you can do to the front without affecting everything.
Yes.
That's all I would say, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Fortunately, it doesn't appear that the applicant has actually showed up, so if you are uncomfortable not hearing from the applicant, you can continue this to our next meeting, or if you feel that the information provided to you is adequate to, um, make a ruling, it is completely up to you.
We can, because I don't, um, is it an answer, I'd like to have more information. Okay. Uh, the committee would like to continue until the next meeting.
Okay, I'll get that date certain. Okay, so we would need a motion to continue to September 24th.
Right, your motion.
My second.
All right, continue until September 24th?
All right. You ready for a motion?
You ready for a motion?
All right, excellent. This is a request for a special use permit, uh, located off Zero Grandview Road. Uh, it is a parcel that is landlocked between, um, off of Grandview and Cove, you'll see in just a second. They are requesting a special use permit to allow an 11-unit cottage housing development in accordance with 94-59. So this is the lot right here. Uh, it is, uh, just shy of 35 acres. Um, it does not have any public utilities on it. Um, it is, uh, septic and well would have to be used in the area that it is being proposed. There is no frontage on a public way. It is currently zoned R1, low-density, single-family residential, and it is vacant and heavily wooded. So here is your zoning map, so as you can see, uh, that big red area to the left is the RA, it's a city-owned parcel, as well as the, to the south, that R1 is also city's, uh, city-owned property, uh, and it is adjacent to county zoned areas. So it is very rural up there, uh, with little to no neighbors or development in that adjacent to it, except for three or four homes. So as part of the special use permit, we go back to our comprehensive plan and follow the, uh, land use, future land use development map. As you can see, the subject property is located in our rural residential designation for the comprehensive plan. So, the applicant is proposing, uh, two clusters, one five units and one six units. Um, and there, the, the use of the, this use is to be considered lower impact than if you were to develop a full subdivision to the extent, um, applicable in this area. So here is the site plan. Um, that red line that you see is a, uh, road that is proposed from Grandview that is going to the adjacent property, which is owned by the same, uh, applicants here today, and it will be accessed from that roadway. So they are building off of Grandview, um, they're currently under review with the county for that development. So the, the way that the, um, sorry, the cottage housing regulations stipulate, you can have, um, up to two clusters and, uh, they are proposing one cluster of six units and one with five units. There are open space requirements, there are community buildings, um, that are required as well, uh, common areas, and they are also, um, the cottage housing goes into how big they can be, um, they can be no greater than 1,500 square feet. Um, the parcel or land area needed to do this is a minimum of 25,000 square feet. Um, they are to be one-story, they are to have garages and patios. The cottage housing regulation is very specific on how this is to be developed. Um, the common area is to have, um, units on either side of it, and it has to be accessed by, um, all walkways, driveways, and roadways are to be paved as well. So staff recommendation, so there are a couple of things here. We cannot provide water and sewer to this area, so it would have to be long septic, which is not under the purview of the city to approve or deny. That would be in the Department of Health or Environmental Health with the county. Um, so, uh, with this approval, it is an approval for two clusters, one with six units and one with five units, and, uh, this does not supersede any other zoning ordinance requirements. Vehicular access shall be provided via, uh, the roadway that is going to be built in Grand, from Grandview Road, and there is no access off of Cove Road. Uh, the only access is that super sharp corner, and we don't want to encourage anybody up there to turn in there. Um, we are also, we have no commitments or we cannot, um, this rezoning or special use permit does not guarantee any providing of any sort of public utilities up there. And then all site plan review, uh, stipulations and regulations must be adhered to as well as the existing ordinance.
Okay, is there anyone here representing this development? Sir, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I'm fine. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes.
All right, please come forward, have you anything to say here?
Hi, my name's Carrie Sheldon, I have a question, I believe you misspoke. When you said that it's not, there's no surrounding residential. I live in the neighborhood of 21 homes, that this would disrupt with all the noise that would be happening on even developing it. There's also five homes on Grandview, right after where they're wanting to put the driveway to go. So we're gonna be looking at a lot of traffic issue right there. Um, my concern is when you say units and clusters, and what I've read just a little bit ago, which surprised me, was that he's using the term family and slash church gathering places. So then you're gonna be looking at noise ordinance. Because right now where we live, it's very peaceful and quiet, it's, it's actually wonderful, and this is why we moved here from California. We dealt with having to deal with wells, having to have a well in a community, and when the well fails, then you're dealing with a lot of upset people having to figure out and pull money together on how to pay for that. Sharing a well, a water system and even sewage is not a good idea. But my, I don't understand using family retreat and church, how that makes it acceptable reasoning? Because when you talk about having, have you ever been to a retreat, a church retreat? Have you ever been to a? I mean, a family retreat is one thing, I mean, even renting these things out, you're bringing in people that's not gonna really respect the property, they're not gonna respect the surrounding area. So I'm not understanding why that would even be acceptable. That's what I got to say.
Sir, do you have anything you would say about your question?
I don't, I don't know what the question was, to be honest.
Why are you using the, the words family retreat and church groups? That you would be renting these things out to, these cottages?
This is our second time doing this, we did that in Montana, and that is our intent, our families to use it, churches to use it, uh, retreat-like experiences.
And isn't there going to, okay, isn't there going to be a better place that has an area that it's not gonna disrupt residential?
Not that I own.
Of course not that you own, I don't know how you would have done that. But to put it in an area and then stipulate, well, it's not close to a residential area, that's not true. Have you looked up the area? Have you gone up the street? Sweet Briar is two seconds.
So the positioning, if you can look, can you look at the whole property, ma'am?
Yeah, because I was trying to see where my house was.
Positioning and what our intent is, it goes past your subdivision? Are you in the three, three-acre lot subdivision on the right? Where's your home?
On the left, we're on the same side that you're building. So in other words, our first cul-de-sac in my residential area is going to here, oh, that wonderful building in destruction.
Okay, so, two different topics. If anyone's gonna build on their property, it's a moment in time, it will cause construction noise, but that's gonna happen on any project that goes on in this city. You have to build a home and then it quiets down after the building is done.
I get that, we built a house every five years.
So everybody made noise when they built in your neighborhood and then it calms back down. So our intent is to move this property further up to the ridge, so your neighborhood is down low, this is further past you on the right.
And the noise level, once you have built this with renting these cabins out, what kind of rooming is it gonna be for noise and pollution, property, respecting the property, and the neighborhoods around it?
Yeah, I'm in the neighborhood around it.
All right, thank you, ma'am, and we have recognized your concern about the development. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak on this development?
Yeah.
Please come to the podium and state your name. And sir, for the record, what was your name?
Grant Schmelker.
Yeah, I'm Carol Hoben, I live right around there too. And from what I understand, and I've tried to do some research on this, there's a lot of mines underneath that property. Is that not, is that not correct? There's a lot of mine shafts around there? So how do you build on top of that?
I'll speak to that when you're...
And the water, the water usage for that property is gonna be strictly wells? There's gonna be no other water, because we have a water issue in this county.
Yeah, the city isn't able to reach this property at this time.
So sir, can you answer the question about the mines?
Yes, so we've met with the city and, well, we've had a survey for the mine shafts, and then we've been asked to move off of that mine shaft, an additional 150 feet for this buffer. It's been surveyed with the city, so I don't know. Not to your question, we're not building over the mines, I guess is the answer to your question.
Well, I'm gonna be impressed that they've run pretty deep on that property.
Yeah, we've got the map.
Okay. And then that's a, that's an issue for later on. And for the residents that live in that area, you know, I realize that it's already zoned for this, but for a retreat, for a special attack, I have a feeling.
Okay.
I would be highly opposed to that, for the same reason she's mentioned.
Thank you, ma'am, for sharing your concerns, and the commission will recognize that. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Uh, I had a couple of questions. Uh, if you could show the one with all the two little clusters, please. Um, have you talked to Environmental Health?
We have.
And did they indicate that you were gonna be able to have, uh, 11 septic systems?
Yeah, we're gonna be working towards a community septic.
Has one ever been approved?
It has.
In this county, in this state?
Yes, sir.
Really? Where's that?
I don't know, I don't work for the EPD.
Have you ever approved one, or, or, I mean, known a one to be approved?
In, in Jasper, no, I'm not aware of it. There's one in the city, in Pickens County, there's two new ones.
Anywhere around there, I've never been there.
Um, Pickens County's new one for the new RV setup. Um, there has been a couple, I'm from Augusta, so I know that there is two in Augusta, they have little pocket plants.
Right, well, you're not talking about the pocket plant, is that correct?
I'm not familiar with what that is.
It's just a large, it's a larger version of the septic.
Yeah, we talked to the EPD and the Department of Health, and we've, we've started that process with them, with our soils test, done a phase three study, and those have all indicated that it is possible.
And so, uh, so you've already had per test, done it?
Yes, sir.
None of that's going down in the city water into the mine, I guess, I hope.
No, that's why I don't think it's been checked.
150 feet.
We do own the property over the mines, but we are moving off of the direct access from above.
And, uh, the lines on this page, is that a topography, correct?
Yes.
So it seems to be very steep in that area, and yet you're gonna be able to get in that many septic systems and that many wells?
Uh, that'd be two septic systems, sir, that'd be a community septic.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any other questions? Do I have any other thing else from the audience? All right, please, sir, please come up and as a podium state your name and...
Uh, my name is Bill Meller.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I've ever met Grant before.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome to Pickens County.
Thank you.
Like Grant, uh, I don't live in the city of Jasper, but unlike Grant, I live in Pickens County, and I live in the area, uh, around here, around this, this development, proposed development. And, uh, I have some questions, particular questions about, uh, whether you should approve it, recommend, uh, to the city council to approve, uh, this cottage housing development in this particular area. Could you go back to that, um, the larger, whoa, that, you went past, keep going, stop right there. If you look at, at this particular project, you can see the green there is all county area, it's all rural residential area, it's all developed, uh, at low-intensity developments. And this particular land is the only land, uh, in that area that belongs to the city. As I understand, uh, there was more land that was annexed into the city, uh, by Gary Copeland many years ago, and then it got de-annexed, some of it got de-annexed out of the city, not too long ago. But this particular land, the city declined to de-annex because it wanted to control the area above the mines, which is the city's, part of the city's water supply. But it's a unique area in that it's quite a ways away from the rest of the city of Jasper, and it really doesn't have that, uh, urban feel that the rest of the city of Jasper has. It's really more like the county. And so when you look at your, um, your criteria, I think number three and number 10, which are the same, the criteria for approval of a special use permit, uh, you have to look at whether it's gonna be good for the city and, and how it's gonna affect the neighborhood. And I think that this is a unique, uh, piece of property and that a cottage housing development is not the appropriate place, this is not the appropriate place for a cottage housing development. I like the idea that, uh, if you developed it as R1, straight out R1, you might be able to get 30 houses on it, uh, one-acre lots, three to four acres, uh, and that would be a lot. But you might have problems selling it because of the location of the mines. But as far as making it a cottage development, that's more like something that you would want in an urban area, and not something that you would want out in the county. And it's gonna be quite different than all of the other development that's in the county. And so I think you should consider, you know, how it's going to affect that particular neighborhood, and how different it's going to be. Even though it's in the city, it's still really surrounded by the county stuff, and the county's going to develop it as rural residential. And if you look at the comprehensive plan, you can see that the comprehensive plan says that that whole urban area is expected to be future development as rural residential. And we're constantly having to deal with suburban, uh, rezoning to suburban, uh, residential. Not in that area, but it looks like the county's going to hold the line and keep it as rural residential. But I, I just don't see how you can recommend to the commissioners that this, um, cottage housing development would be appropriate for this area. Number one, she didn't really go into it in detail, but the, uh, the site plan, can you go to the site plan? Yeah, the site plan isn't consistent with the, uh, cottage, uh, housing development ordinance that the city has right now. I mean, the cottage housing, uh, development, uh, ordinance says those cottages have to be on both sides of the common area, uh, and it's not. The, there's some other specifications, I think, I didn't get into the details, you might be able, tell you the specifics of how this particular site plan is not consistent with the cottage, uh, housing ordinance. In, in particular, if you want the details, I, I'm not an expert on the city's ordinance, but this site plan that they've submitted is not sufficiently, uh, approved the way it is. And it seems unfair to, uh, the citizens of the county to, for you to recommend to the city council that they approve this when we don't even know what the site plan is actually gonna be. They can't, they cannot get, they cannot build it according to the site plan, as we're discussing. And why are we having a, a public hearing on something that we really don't know what it's gonna be?
Thank you, sir.
Now, I'm not finished, if you don't mind.
I'm gonna give you about another minute, okay?
Oh, well, okay. There's also, you know, the possibility, and this is speculation, is that you could, it's, uh, you know, 11 units and, uh, and 34 acres, so that's pretty good, uh, pretty low-density. But there's nothing, a special use permit, that would keep you from, uh, subdividing that property and taking those 15 acres off and coming back to the city at a later time and say, hey, let's put two more clusters in here. These first two clusters did real well, let's put another one. That's mere speculation, uh, Grant has not said that that's what they're going to do, but it'd be very hard for the city to deny that, uh, later on. And you could end up with the, you know, 33 units in there, uh, over time, and it'd be hard for you to oppose that if you've already approved one cluster. And the other thing I wanted to point out, that I don't think you guys talk... If you look right here, this is a ravine. This is the high, high point. What's not shown here is that this ravine goes off to, have you ever been down the cove and seen the waterfall back there where the Masons have their annual retreat or whatever? It looks like, and I can't, I can't say for sure that it does, but it sure looks like that goes right into that waterfall, which goes right into the water supply. So if you're going to put a package plant or a community septic treatment facility up there, which are notorious for failure, but they're usually used only as temporary means until the city can get sewage to an area. Because, I mean, think of it, you've got 11 units, 11 people, and they're going to be rentals. So they're not going to be people who are really concerned about what they put down the drain. So these package plants often fail, they get upset. And then you've got a real problem because you've got 11 houses that continue to dump in. You have a regular septic system on one house. Those people are concerned about what goes into their septic system because they don't want it to fail. But when you've got a rental like this with 11 units, it's going to be a whole different ballgame, quite different than all the rest of the development in that area. So I don't think you would want to recommend to the city council that you start approving these package plants or community, I say, I think they call them community septic treatment facility. And particularly in this particular area where that ravine is going to go down right into our water supply. It's not very far, and that waterfall is just out of the picture there.
Some good issue.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, one other thing was, oh, these are, they're proposing 1,000 square foot cottages.
Yes, sir.
And it's got to be 1,400 in an R1, or 15, I'm sorry. What is the, the square footage for?
So this is a special use permit.
Right.
So some of the requirements for minimum size do not apply. So those, the maximum is 1,500 for these units.
Okay, and how about for a R1?
R1 is 1,400.
Okay.
But this is a special use permit within the...
So this will have 1,000 square foot units, which is quite different than all the other development that you're going to see in that green area in the county. And the fact that it's going to be, you know, non-owners. I think I saw somewhere in the ordinance that there is an issue about the owners, the common areas have to be owned by the owners of the units. And I don't know how you do that with what's being proposed here with a church or family retreat, which appears to be almost a commercial activity. It's, doesn't, it doesn't fall under the commercial standards, hey, city zoning. But if it's going to be a rental of 11 units for retreats or family get-togethers, it's almost like a hotel.
Yes.
Even though you, you don't, it doesn't fit your requirements for a business.
It's like Airbnb.
But it just doesn't seem like, you're going to, you're thinking about doing a special use permit, special use. And the only time you would want to do a special use that is different than the regular zoning is when it's, there's some benefit there. And it just looks like a cottage housing development in this particular area would not be appropriate because of what the neighborhood is like, all the rest of that area.
Yes, sir, the commission has taken your concerns under advisement. Grant, I do have one question. Once this is built, will the development be able to be seen from the main road?
No.
Will there be any kind of buffer to help with sound around this to prevent...
Yeah, it's a very wooded area already.
So your plans are that the woods would prevent the sound and there would not be a sideline from the road? Unfortunately, okay.
I'd also like to address, is it Mr. Miller?
Yes.
I'd also like to address the discussion of that doesn't meet this special use cottage permit, but that was specifically built line by line and meeting the city's ordinance as a requirement for cottage style housing by our engineers. But it does, it does meet all the requirements. So she's the expert.
So that is why your conditions of approval are not based on a concept plan. They are based on the number of units. So when he comes in to do a site plan, he will go through every one of those and make sure it falls the regulations. So that's why it's stated. So this is just to give you a visual of what it could look like. So yes, I did mention that when I was discussing it, that he did not have units on both sides of the common area. Also, an event center is not allowed to be used. It has to be a community building. So there are certain aspects that do not coincide directly word for word. But when the site plan comes in, that's when we address all the regulations to the Ts and the Is.
Okay, do you have any questions?
We...
I do. How many, approximately, how many mines is there on this property?
I have not counted them. You have just three, three total.
Has there been any type of study on the structural integrity of the mines? So when we start utilizing or clearing these lands, how the mine, how the mines are going to be affected? Is it, this is going to be used as like a retreat or family issues? You know, is there issue of collapsing or anything along those lines?
Yeah, so the, the mines are on the far left of that? Not where I can...
Yeah, that would be great.
Now, we've got mine maps, but if you look at the property...
Those are even worse.
Yeah, I don't know how to show you, but this section is mines. This section is where we're proposing. So we've smelt staff and we've shifted around away from the mines.
We have completed several surveys of this area to ensure that there are certain areas that can and cannot be developed. I don't have the final decision on all of the, how that went down. That was not part of this, this project here.
Where the current survey shows the mine shaft stopping, there's an additional 150-foot buffer in our site plan, and then the property is even further from that. Most of it's 300 feet away from the far closest mine shaft.
And all we're voting on today is a special use permit?
Mm-hmm. So yes, that's very nice. So in, in, just to touch, and I may not have touched on it. So when we are looking at these things, we are looking at, at the different regulations and that they, you know, it is the burden of providing the septic and the water is not on us. Whether he came, gets out there and it doesn't perk, that's on him. So, and, and with the water, and, and so making sure that this meets the definition of our cottage housing, which is, you know, the number of units, the size of the units, how they're accessed in the common area is what the special use permit is for. So because it is, they can be smaller than the 1,400 feet because they can be located on three quarters of an acre, not the standard layout. So it's kind of, you think of it as a conservation subdivision where you cluster all the houses together and then you have open space around it. That's the best thing I can think about describing that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we have a vote as reported.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a no? No. Okay, as the sitting chairperson, I vote to recommend. So that would be two point. So we vote to recommend to the city commission with all items listed to recommend it to the city commission.
Okay, item three is part of the same project. They are requesting a variance to not pave access, entry, and walkways or anything. So as we stated before, 34 acres. There is no frontage on a public way, R1. As part of any development within the city, you have to provide paved access to, to any residential, commercial, any sort of development. And that includes walkways and parking areas and so forth. So this variance request is to not have the gravel or to allow for gravel or other suitable surfaces for the driveway parking and access. In our, in our code right now, gravel is prohibited. So hence why we have this, the paving is the, the variance request for the paving to go back to the gravel. So as you all remember, we have the criteria that needs to be met. Anything extraordinary, exceptional conditions to this property. There is some soil shape, size. Obviously, we have topographic challenges in this area. Whether this would be, you know, significant enough to prevent them from paving, I'm not sure. Also, is this an unnecessary hardship? Considering all residential development within the city of Jasper has to do this. We don't find that this is particular to this product, project, or that it is unnecessary because the conditions are peculiar to this, or are they peculiar? You know, everything that we've seen in the development, especially these larger residential developments within the city, there are topographic challenges, there are soil challenges, but everybody is facing them the same way by providing the paved access. And would this be a detriment to the public good or impair the purposes of the zoning ordinances? We feel that this would be setting a precedent to allow a residential development consisting of this number of units to not have access to a paved road. Also, one other consideration is that the access that is being provided from Grand View through the county parcel is required to be paved as well. So we are recommending denial of the variance request to allow for services other than pavement.
Okay, before we get into the discussion on this, please remember this is on this request only about the paving of the roads and sidewalks. So does anybody have any concerns or comments they would like to make?
Sure.
Please remember this is only about paving of the roads and the sidewalks.
Sure. The issue here is that you've got access to this through another subdivision. And then you're going into this new development that would be, if they get the variance, would be just gravel roads. If you all remember back when Bentree was, was built, and you remember Georgia Baptist Retreat back at Sharp Top? The access to that was through the gated community of Bentree. And that didn't last very long because eventually the people in Bentree didn't like people coming through their gated community to get to the Georgia Baptist camp in the back. And so they ended up coming around to Wendy Ridge and building a new road called George Baptist Road along Sharp Top to get into it. And that was initially a gravel road. And if this is a successful development in here, then you're going to have a lot of people moving in and out. The problem with, with Georgia Baptist and Bentree was that it's camp, and so it's not people living there, using the road, the same people using the road. It's new people coming in all the time, like going faster on gravel roads, stirring up dust differently. The, the people using it is, is going to be a lot different than if they were people that were living on the road.
So sir, are you for or against them paving this road?
Well, I'm against you guys.
Yeah.
Giving them a variance from your normal regulations because I don't see that anybody benefits, that the city benefits or the neighborhood benefits from you granting a variance to not pave the road.
So you are against the variance?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And does anybody else in the audience would like to please step forward?
I don't want to support.
Please state your name.
Carrie Sheldon again.